Go call please.
Jenny David. Roger Mayhew. Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Need approval of the agenda?
I got a question, Tim, did? Matt get back with us?
No.
Okay, let's get.
We'll watch for him to chime in, but no.
I'll make provision to approve the agenda.
Second. On favor? I posed. Okay, any public comment? From the present audience in this room and on the TV land? Any public comment? I asked three times.
Yep.
Twice. Okay, no public comment. This is about appointments.
There are none.
Okay. Discussion items, MERS Retirement Conference Delegates.
Yeah, gave you a handout on the Google Drive about frequently asked questions about conference delegates. It's that time of year, each year we are to, under statute and under MERS rules, send an elected employee delegate and a management representative to the MERS annual meeting at their annual conference. This year will be September twenty eighth down at the Renaissance Center in Detroit. I think that's what they still call it anyway. We send these delegates down there to literally vote on matters that MERS deals with, and they're usually pretty routine type things, almost like approving minutes. But now and then they come up with maybe a new investing strategy or some new change to one of the plans, and they need to get the vote of the members of the organization to do that. We currently have an election underway amongst our non-managerial employees, and then typically we select the managerial employee to fill that slot down at the conference. Now, it may seem early to be doing this in July for a September conference, but the idea right now is to get this part out of the way so that we can get our employees registered for the conference at the early rate. It does go up significantly mid-August, as I recall. And so we can get this taken care of, get the lower rate and get our representatives down to the conference in September. I will bring a resolution next Thursday with the names, so as soon as the election is over, we have two candidates. Once that's over, we will announce the person with the most votes and put the resolution together, and you'll have it next week.
Can we hear the names of the people that are running?
Uh, Renata. I'm gonna pronounce your last name wrong and register deeds and Nicole David over at the jail.
Oh. Pretty safe.
And voting has been impressive.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? Discussion on that?
Unless there are questions.
Any comments?
I don't question.
I suspect we have one of our custodians doing some cleaning.
Yeah, all the Zamboni there.
No, one of the new alarms that are on our doors.
Oh.
The doors you're not supposed to use are going on.
Oh.
You should probably just clean.
Okay.
Okay, employee testing?
All right. This was mentioned a few meetings ago that we needed to review this, and then this is the, we see the employee testing. Commissioner Simmons is right, it's testing and examination, but medical related. So when we send our employees for pre-employment physicals or workers' comp referrals or anything like that, we named the, is now my Michigan with the pricing that you see on the resolution that was adopted in twenty-one. We've run into some difficulties with M. Coles with our sheriff deputies. The only place in our region that's doing M. Coles medical exams right now is Covenant down in Saginaw. Now, my Michigan doesn't do that, and my Michigan also does not do the DOT physicals that are required out at Transit, and you'll see there are emails in there from both the sheriff's office and Transit explaining what their needs are. So the question then became, well, should we be continuing to use my Michigan? Well, for anything but those two, Sheriff's Office and Transit, really, the only thing we're doing right now is sending people for their pre-employment physicals. We don't have a lot of demand, haven't had a lot of worker comp cases. In fact, I can only think of two since I've been here, and they both went to my Michigan. But you see the pricing on these, we're not getting any breaks. This is the same pricing that my Michigan charged the public, but they're way under anything that requires board approval. So is it necessary that we have a resolution that we name a specific facility? Really necessary? I mean, it's okay, there's nothing wrong with doing that, but Ray at Transit has his doctor lined up who does the M. dot physicals, meets the requirements of M. dot, and Sheriff's Office, and they clearly have only one place to go for the M. Coles physicals. So those are the only two out of the ordinary type of physicals that we need to have done. So I think at this point, we really don't need to do anything. We certainly can if you want to, but if you want to name my Michigan as where the place we go for pre-employment or workers' comp, we can certainly do that, but it really isn't necessary.
Well, if it's not necessary, then why do it? That's my thought, and then that gives us a choice who we want.
I like to have options. I don't think it's necessary.
Is mid-Michigan, though? That's my Michigan.
Right, yeah.
They've shown a DOT physical.
Well, they do, but now they're not doing it, or they're not doing what Ray needs to have done. I'm not sure what the NIDA screen is and so on, but whatever Ray needs, they don't provide. He might explain it here in his email.
Do you remember Commissioner Simmons? I know Ray's told us about.
I know he has too.
I can't remember.
I can't either. I just figured.
I thought it was my Michigan didn't.
I can't remember.
More in depth. And somebody didn't ask the physical because they were more in depth than what?
No, it was because they already had their M. dot certification.
Right, that was that.
Yeah, it was just supposed to be a pre, just a regular exam for again, on drugs and stuff like that, but he already had his his M. dot certification. It was still valid, so. I just, I just assumed we have our options.
I agree.
Oh, what about like? Ray, we're in a hectic sense. Ray, Ray's saying that most ongoing DOT physicals are performed by family physicians, so are we reimbursing people?
If they go themselves and pay, they're definitely eligible for reimbursement.
If that's something that we really want to do is reimburse?
If they'll bill us, we'll all that too.
I mean, how many physicals do we do?
Yeah, I know they've got random, random drug screens that they do at Transit as well, and that's obviously taken care of with, it's got another company named OMS Compliance that does that for them. Yeah, the DOT physicals, anytime we get a new driver that doesn't have a certification would have to go.
Yeah.
M. Coles, I don't know how often they do those. I don't know if it's one time when you are initially hired. I don't know if they have to renew it every so many years, I'm not sure. But I do know the sheriff's on top of it, and that's why we know about the Covenant situation.
DOTs every two years, unless you have medical issues or something like that, you have sugar, high blood pressure, you may have to do it as early as every six months or every year. I have to do my DOT physical every year instead of every two.
Why is that?
Because of my age. They say because of my age, and now I have to do it every year. It used to be every two.
Okay.
So I keep my, I keep my CDL current, and so I gotta have a DOT physical. And I had mine done at McLaren. I couldn't have my regular doctor do it because he doesn't, he's not certified to do it, but.
Right.
Doctor, or Carrie Hodgins did it for me.
Doctor who?
Doc, Carrie Hodgins. I don't know what title she is, but.
Oh, female, I thought it was a person that was on an airport board. Team Hodgins.
He did check out my car, yeah.
Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was empty too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I thought, I thought that we tried, we were trying, I thought the main thing we were trying to do is go through one particular source.
And our intentions were good. We just don't have the.
It's possible at that point.
Yeah.
Well, they're not gonna, if they're not gonna do these things, yeah. And if we gotta go all the way Saginaw.
Ideally, if we go through one source, they give us a break in costs. I mean, that'd be perfect, but it just doesn't seem like that's an option right now.
That doesn't seem like that's the situation in this case either.
I don't think we have enough volume of business to where they could really justify it.
No, I don't think we do either.
Yeah.
It's not as though we have a lot, big turnaround in this building.
Yeah.
Do we? No.
So we're just not gonna have a resolution then?
Then you wish, I don't think you need to do one, especially with those prices. They're definitely within the range that departments can approve, so that when we do need any kind of a physical like that, especially if it's a, you know, have to go to Covenant or whatever, they can just do it, not to worry about.
And they'll just bill us. Okay. Okay. Opioid, opioid committee.
You have on the iPads a presentation that's already been put together for the first meeting of our opioid committee. This is put together by Amy Dolinki down at Michigan Association of Counties. She was hired at MAC specifically to be a technical advisor for counties on the opioid settlement. What she has done here, and I don't want to say it's generic, but this is gonna be pretty good information for the committee itself. She's gonna get into just some of the basics of the settlement overview and talk a little bit about how the funds need to be spent and so on, but go through really what the counties are expecting to come up with. And one of the things that we'll need to come up with is just some base information about opioid use in the county, and then talk about how to target you know, prevention or rehabilitation or whatever for the specific type of opioid that's most prevalent in our county. She's already done the research to gather a lot of that data, will present it to the committee. I don't pretend to understand one opioid from another and what the consequences are, but it will, I think, help guide that committee in terms of coming up with a strategy for dealing with it in the county. Now, I also asked her about our situation with the scanner over at the jail, and she immediately said, ooh, the Attorney General already has two other counties in their sites for lawsuits who've done this, who've actually bought one of those scanners.
Unbelievable.
And, and yeah, it sounds like they're gonna go after them. And she also cautioned about these scanners have been purchased across the country. They actually started purchasing these with COVID money because you remember that one module that we opted not to get that would take the temperature of the person on the inside. So a lot of people bought these, a lot of counties bought these scanners with COVID funds, and they've discovered that the overdoses in the correctional facilities have actually increased after scanners were installed. I said, how could that possibly be? That doesn't make any sense. Well, she said, this is a simple solution to this, and she said, if we get one, we need to make sure that our employees who enter the facility every day are also scanned, and that apparently was the source of contraband coming into the other facilities. I cannot imagine any of our employees getting caught up in doing something like that, but the statistics are there. So that was just a caution that she threw out, should we go through with purchasing this with other means. There are another concern that she had put out is that the scanners, they're expensive, but they, she said, they only have a five-year lifespan. Well, we were looking at getting that warranty that would have taken us to that full five years, so maybe, maybe that's what I, the warranty is expired, and then people have had to replace them, but we haven't been five years clear of COVID yet, so I'm not quite sure about that, that particular statement. And I did want to update the board tonight. I just received word at four o'clock from our attorneys that are handling the opioid cases for us. There's a new settlement with Walgreens that they just announced, and that will put another $435,000 for Ogumaw County into our opioid fund, so that'll be it's about just over 700,000 now that would be here, and that, it's a five-year settlement that Walgreens is gonna pay upfront, so that that will come in a single lump sum, so.
For that, 3.5 million.
Yeah, so it's, you know, significant. So the handout is here. What we're going to do next is schedule a meeting, and I do know Commissioner Wiltie, you're on the committee. We, between myself and Kelly, decided we would allow our commissioner representatives to pick the meeting date. Obviously, you know, Thursdays are taken. You know, but you know, a Tuesday would work, whatever. Amy is available pretty much all of August, so it's just a matter now of landing on a date, and we'll get this committee off and running.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to speak with Commissioner Davis, and she's on it, and then we'll get back to you guys next week.
Yeah.
We gotta get this moving.
Yeah. MAC was very excited to have Ogumaw on board. There is a map, I think it's in the handout material here of the counties that they're already assisting. Amy does have a number of other resources that she has available to her to help us as well. People who definitely professionals in the arena right now. So after that initial meeting and some conversation about what our statistics are, what our emphasis should be, she will get in contact with those individuals as well and bring them along for future meetings and start the planning process. Yeah, I'm frankly pretty excited. She's obviously done this in a few counties already, so hopefully all the bugs are worked out, and we can really move forward and hopefully make a difference.
It'll be great to get some suggestions too of what some of the counties are doing. So, so I'm really bothered by this whole scanner thing. I mean, to me, it just seems absolutely booting rest that we cannot use these funds for that. So you said the Michigan Attorney General is in the process of filing two?
That's what, what Amy had said, and she didn't tell me which counties they were. But later that day, M. Life had an article about Kalamazoo County purchasing the same equipment that we're talking about. So I'm wondering if there, and there was mention of opioid funds in there, but the story never said opioid funds were being used to purchase this, but it would be odd to have the two in the same story if they weren't connected somehow. So I'm guessing that might be one of the county.
So really, then the, the Michigan Attorney General is the one who can tell us yes or no?
Right. Just a quick bit of history, when this opioid situation began to really get momentum in Michigan, a number of counties got together and hired the law firms that we've used in Ogumaw County. And we, as a group of counties, went with these firms who began doing the negotiation with the various opioid providers, the state stepped in and said, well, we appreciate what the counties have done so far, but citing constitutional means, saying the state actually is the body that needs to negotiate this for the local governments in Michigan, or at least the counties. And their rationale in, under the Constitution, counties are creatures of the state, the state has the overall authority. The attorneys that were representing the county said, yes, you're right. So they began working in tandem, and the Attorney General's office took the lead on some of these settlement negotiations. From there, the state technically is the one that's had to approve all the formulas for the funds that the counties are receiving, and they're taking the lead as the enforcer, if you will, of that Appendix E that lists everything that we can do with the funds, and that's their basis. Now, will they prevail in those cases? I don't know, but I, like, I've been pretty firm. I think the way Appendix E is written, it is justifiable. But as our attorneys pointed out, we're not a clinic, we're not a clinic setting. Again, we can argue that we do have a clinic in the jail. So I think there's some, are some room for interpretation. I am really surprised that they would be that aggressive over this, but
Very general.
I've seen them more aggressive on lesser issues, so I guess I shouldn't be surprised.
Well, it doesn't make sense, that's probably why. Wow. Now, I just would like to have a, right from their, from them, what's their reasoning being so aggressive on this?
Um, I hadn't thought about that, but I could certainly contact their office and ask for an explanation.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I think we deserve one.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Especially when we have medical people over there.
Tim, there's a note there on pharmacy and manufacturer settlements found at the bottom, it's like eight panels in. Myers is a separate non-national settlement, four counties, three cities, and six township, these ones. Ogumaw County did not sign on?
Well, we didn't have a Meyer then either, while this was going on, so that made sense.
Okay. That does, yeah. Then there was something else here. The map of MAC, MAC Technical Assistance Engagement. Were not engaged down here.
Not when the map was created, we were not.
Oh, I thought we jumped on this right away.
Oh, we were, we, they're talking about, in their case, their technical assistance, Amy coming to the county and and obviously that's gonna change, we're gonna be green here very soon.
Very good. When's the first meeting on this group, do you know, Charlie?
That's, that's what we're gonna.
Pay attention, sir. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you.
Was that gonna be the first?
It wasn't the first time we had. Ten minutes ago. I'm gonna get with Commissioner David because she's on the committee, and then we're gonna, they asked us to dates in August.
Got it.
One more discussion? So we're gonna wait.
Right now.
For you, a reason from. Through you. Okay, okay, let's move on to the Consumers Energy meeting.
Okay, I had a very, very good meeting. Jim Mintorn from Consumers Energy, he is the lead. He's not an employee of Consumers Energy, but contract vendor with them who deals specifically with buildings such as ours and improvements that would help with the energy efficiency. We took a walk through the building. He was here a little over an hour, just as we kind of toured, and he got an idea of what we were dealing with. He would look up and start pointing at lights and say, that one, that one, that one, and start rattling off some of the more efficient lighting that's available. We did the same thing with the windows, would look at those and say, okay, this is this kind of a window, we really need this type of window. We did look at the boiler system, we looked at the chilling system or the chiller with the air conditioner. Long story short, there are a lot of things that can be done in this building. We did take a peek over at the Sheriff's Office, same there, and we were actually talked about Transit Building too. As long as we're talking about this, we'll throw that into the mix. We do that because as we make decisions to do things, let's say we do windows. Consumers Energy is bound by, believe it or not, a statute that says if a municipal, municipal building replaces all of its windows, they are eligible for, depending on the number of windows, a rebate from Consumers Energy, which is pretty significant in the tens of thousands of dollars. That's what's great news because not only are we using, obviously, ARPA when we're talking about this, but now we get some leverage to get additional funds out of Consumers Energy. We're doing this, and on top of that, we'll get the energy efficiency improvements as well. I'm going to be pretty adamant by suggesting to you that whatever rebates that we're eligible for, that you would designate those is funds that you put into a capital improvements fund. That's to say, we don't just dump it into the general fund and use it. It goes into a capital improvements fund for other things that we need to do that are ongoing. And I say that because we are fairly typical of municipalities, a number of these improvements really should be on a plan so that we don't run into this problem with having all these things happen all at once and have it cost so much. So if we need to do, just talking about the situation at the parking lot over at the Sheriff's Office, when we need a capital improvement like that, the funds are there to do it. You don't have to wait for another budget year to roll around a budget for it, you've got funds available for that. That's down the road. Mr. Mintorn did want to meet with the board and go over all of the programs that they have at Consumers Energy. He talked about smart thermostats. He said that alone is gonna save you a ton of money just in terms of how you heat the building and when you heat it and when you shouldn't, and the thermostat can tell if there's somebody in the room and whether that room needs the heat and so on. And he's got a project he's working on over at Lake City right now with the school. He said the school building itself is much like this building, and you just, it's just incredible how much they're saving on their utility bills alone right now. So what he'd like to do is meet with you, and he said it'll be an hour to an hour and a half as they walk through all of the different programs that they have. He will bring an engineer and HVAC expert in as well to talk about our infrastructure and the condition it's in today and make their suggestions. But they cannot meet next week when we wanted to do our ARPA meeting. They could meet at some point in August, which we can talk about, if you want to dedicate a Cal meeting just to that, or if you want to have a special meeting to that. But it is gonna be, you know, fairly like the presentation. So that also begs the question, since this really was the topic we wanted to talk about at that ARPA meeting, do you want to have the ARPA meeting next week or not? That's, you know, entirely your call. But that's where it stands right now. We've actually got another person, I've got his name written down back at the office that's reviewing our utility usage for the last year, going through the billing for all of our facilities, and can also kind of get an idea of where our demand is and maybe help them focus where their attention needs to to make these improvements happen. You know, again, showed him the window in my office and explained particularly in the winter, when there's a west wind, the blinds are moving because that much air is getting in through the window, and he said, that's not unusual for buildings like this. So immediately, he's already thinking about ways to make these improvements. And of course, the typical things, they'll check the insulation, our values in all of our buildings, and tell us if we need to make changes along those lines. But very exciting, I think that's the roadmap we want. But unfortunately, they just can't meet with us next week.
Okay, comment? Some of our questions last time about what we do with the ARPA money, you know, Treasurer's Office, this building, et cetera, there's three things on there. So we might as well not have the ARPA meeting because we gotta wait for this information anyway. You know, we, we'd still be looking in the blind. So I'd wait until after this walkthrough and, and programs have been discussed with us, so give us some idea what, what we're talking about, because right now we don't.
You could get this information first, I'd say.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I'll agree with that, yeah. Yeah, we need this, need this information, and the consumers is not, we don't provide it just yet.
What's that?
Wait for them.
Where's this Mint Corn from, you know?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm not even sure he told me.
So he's a subcontractor of consumer?
Right. He walks around in a shirt that says Consumers Energy on it, and I noticed his vehicle had the decal on it, but he's not an employee.
Okay. I think we wait.
Does that mean then next week we?
I'd like to do, as committee, as a whole meeting, not a regular commission meeting, because it's gonna take an hour and a half. I don't wanna have people sitting here an hour and a half listening about.
I'll tell you, I was overwhelmed.
Our utility bills.
Stuff.
Imagine, yeah.
And that was just a walkthrough. I mean, that's not even really studying like what our boilers are doing.
But I think all of us commissioners should be. But I think all of us commissioners should be here, so I'd like to talk to Jenny first and see when she's uh most available morning or the afternoon. I have I have my thoughts about that, but I don't know, so I'd be guessing. I mean, I can call her tonight as far as that goes in my own pride of my own, not tonight. I'm not gonna call her when I get up in the morning either.
Now, is that in regards to having a special meeting?
Pardon me?
Is that then so we would uh set up a special meeting just for this then?
No, I'd have it as committee as a whole. Why set up a special meeting? I guess sit and talk about it then.
Well, in first week in August.
Yeah, if if they're available, I'll have to get with them too with.
Yeah.
Uh in fact, I'll give them both dates in August, and then if one doesn't work, hopefully, then one will.
I'll give you my information that I said tonight. I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Morning, hopefully, if I'm functioning. Any other thing?
Yeah, I got just a question for Tim. Employee handbooks. How were we at on that?
Um we there's a draft personnel manual with the Personnel and Policy Committee right now uh that's being reviewed.
Oh.
Yeah.
But you guys reviewed that a few months ago.
Well, you made a mistake. We didn't.
You didn't?
No.
Okay, all right.
It's in the process. We discussed it yesterday, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
And some change and some changes, and I think the changes were appropriate.
Good.
I guess I I the changes I want in there, so there's no misunderstanding about what is what. I don't want to be, I don't, yeah, I don't want to be able to be interpret interpreted two or three different ways.
Right.
You know? I used to have write letters like that. I used to have some scoundrel that used to interpret stuff, and I gotta write these letters, so there's no misinterpretation on this. Sometimes it took me two days to write that letter. But he couldn't misinterpret anything. Okay, that so that's where we are on that.
Okay.
I just I just want
Okay, right.
Anybody be upset because they interpret it one way and and something else?
I have one comment.
Yes.
Of it. So a while back, we had talked about, we all know the importance of grants, you know, having someone for grant writing.
Yes.
You know, there's all I obviously we have many different departments with different components, and certain grant writers are maybe really strong in one area and have not, you know, don't really have as much experience in another. Um to me, this seems like, and we have talked about this, um another great opportunity with these building improvements that we really need somebody to be looking into this, that we know that's just everything can that possibly could be covered for this through a grant that we're trying to get it. Uh for example, I just uh left an EMS um board meeting and uh Bob Dak, who does some grant writing for for the EMS. We just got awarded a hundred and fifty-nine or a hundred and sixty-nine thousand for a new ambulance. And Bob wrote that up, you know, so I just think it's it's just so important, because you know, we have had discussions. Well, you know, how are we making sure that we're capitalizing on all these opportunities when it comes to grants and and we know we're not, and I don't know if we ever could totally get to the point where you know, every single facet is, you know, we're looking into, but we need to try to as much as possible any grant, but you know, this is just a a perfect example of, you know, that we know there's a lot of grants for these type of things. So what what's our best move with that?
Well, um getting this shopping list, if you will, from consumers and prioritizing what we want to do is gonna help immensely in terms of going after a grant. And the example I want to use is one that um been a couple of years ago now, over at the Sheriff's Office, there was a new air handler put on the top of that building, completely done with a two hundred fifteen thousand dollar grant from the D N R of all places. Um I think once we've got the list of projects, then we can start targeting things. If we're gonna replace boilers, that's gonna be expensive. Um you know, consumers will step up on some of that, but if we've got another opportunity, and with all of the other ARPA silos that are out there, we may well have opportunities to apply for and leverage some of what we've got and get some other funds in here to do it. Um you know, USDA funding um patrol vehicles is is a surprise. You would think Department of Agriculture doing it, and they're building jails. But those are the kinds of things that we want to unearth, but we need to know what we're looking for first.
Right.
So that's gonna be the key. Um one big ticket item that uh he mentioned just in his walkthrough was I mentioned the chiller. Um and I don't know what I'm talking about, but the chiller, if he's into the air conditioning system. He took one look at our our setup over here, and he said, oh, yeah, you know, technology is way beyond this. Uh you can get do this, this, and this. You'll save money. And you'll get this rebate and so on. That's what I need to work with, though. I need what it is I want to apply for versus just some generic, well, you know, throw this against the wall and see if it sticks. I think those targeted uh projects in lab pricing, so this is what we believe it's gonna cost. This is why we're asking for this much. I think we stand a lot better chance of being successful.
Yeah.
Comment. When you when you're talking about grants to use needs to be somebody that's familiar with the area they want. In other words, for an ambulance, it shouldn't be us that's ready for that.
That was a point that someone that's specific.
And just like the snowmobile for for the jail that's coming, they got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for they need to be looking for that. You know, because they know what they want. And I wouldn't even know where to start looking for a snowmobile grant for a sheriff's department. So I think I think the entities that need the money, and and we are one of those entities
Right.
with this building uh needs to be the 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 department that applies for that grant. In other words, you can't pick somebody off the street and say, I want you to start writing some grants. It's like
Well.
You gotta have something specific.
There's contractors out there to write grants for you, just like Bob Dak. Um I think I think you're on the right track that the department head or elected official explains the need. And then we just, they don't have to really find the right grant itself. We can ask a grant writer. Most grants pay for the grant writers. Yeah, mobile grants. You have a professional grant writer. The grant itself will pay for the grant writer.
Doesn't need to write the grants for the jail.
He's been doing quite a few. Um Leanne Fisher, when housing is.
I've even I've rewritten grants that have been approved. I mean, all I gotta do is follow the directions.
Oh, yeah.
And sometimes the directions can be monumental.
Oh, yeah.
And include a lot of research that you have to do to get to get the answers they want. So but it has to be someone that's familiar with that kind of stuff, because I wouldn't even know where to look for the information with some of the stuff like the jail. I wouldn't know where to look.
I think.
But I think Peter's doing a good job.
It's probably one of the first avenues.
MAC?
Yeah, Michigan Associates Counties, Michigan Municipal League, even M T A.
If you know what you want a grant for.
Right, well. Reach out to them and say, we need a grant for.
But you can really kind of look it up. Um um the technology, you can just look it up, grants for it. I mean, that's what I did for for us, and because we're not a animal shelter, I don't get any of those grants.
Well, that's a that's a good animal control. That's a good uh
Yeah.
Cause there.
Yeah. Maybe they could have paid for that truck and that cage you put animals in. Just a thought.
I'd agree with that.
I'm just saying, we need to always keep it right on top of the main priority list, you know, we're always do always thinking about that and.
But also, uh when you say have to have a quarterback or something, uh I I there's an organization, um and um usually contractors just take over and think because they know what to do. They know what to do first, and what to second. They know when plumbing's gotta be put in, they know where it's, they know when the, they just know when everything's gotta be done. Well, there's been a situation where sometimes it didn't happen. They want to be their own contractor, and cost a lot more money because they were their own contractor. So the best is, you know, when you hire a contractor, they do everything. You know, because they they know when it has to be, it just like building, you know, that when when the the pipes, sewer pipes and the underground stuff and all that's gotta be done, and the wiring and all that. You know what's gotta be done. I wouldn't know. So I wouldn't dare be my own contractor. Believe me, I wouldn't. I've I've already tried it once. It didn't work out too good. So so, yeah, so you have to have a contractor that knows what they're doing when you start putting things together. Any more comments? Any comments from the public?
Yeah. Your turn. My turn.
Sure.
No turn this time?
Good.
See, I didn't do a big job.
I I will say that.
Anyways. I think Commissioner David does a very good job, very good job.
But you did a good job.
So anyways, any more public comments? Any more public comments on the TV? And the Commissioner Chambers? No more public comments. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mr. Mayhew, seconded by Mr. Wilson. We are adjourned at six oh eight. See, I could have I could have been there.
Better not to risk it, though.